Everybody would please stand. Tonight, we have Reverend Angel Ortiz of Integrity Church to do the invocation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm, like you said, with Integrity Church. We're on Pennsylvania in Old 41. Yes, the church with the bells. So, will you bow your head with me as we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. And all who are gathered here, thank you for your abundant blessings. We thank you for life, health, and for the relationships between our fellow man, as well as our relationship with you. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We are so very grateful for opportunity, for liberty, and for justice. Your word establishes governing authorities to promote peace and order. Therefore, I pray for every level of city official, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you graciously grant them continued wisdom, a sense of welfare for the needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and unity, confidence in what is good and fitting, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Benita Springs. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thanks, sir. Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Here.
And Councilmember Bogaz is excused.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We got a full house. All right, public comment on agenda items. So, if you're speaking on one of the zoning items, this is not the time. It'll be when the zoning item comes up. And also, if you're here for zoning item 7E, which was the RPD on the corner of Dean and Matheson, that has been deferred to March 5th. So, that will not be tonight, if you're here for that one. All right, so, we will start public comment, and I know we had a bunch of people sign up, so the clerk will call a couple of names to get started.
James Bradford, and he'll be followed by David Cook.
Mr. Mayor, could we ask the folks in the audience to please turn their phones off or on silent?
Yes, please. Good idea.
Thank you.
Geez, I thought we'd be coming up a little bit later, but thank you very much. I'm Jim Bradford from, I live on Pinson Drive in San Carlos Estates. I'm the chairman of the Board of the Water Control District. I just want to let you, tonight, I'm standing here as a owner, property owner, of San Carlos, in San Carlos Estates. I've spoke to hundreds of people within the community. They are not for changing anything and having the water district taken over by the city or any other combination of things. We appreciate your taking your time this evening to listen to us all, and you do have a crowd of people, so I won't take any more time than that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening to us.
David Cook, and he'll be followed by John Salucci.
David Cook, live in San Carlos Estates. I would concur with Mr. Bradford, because the district does comply with 701(c)(3) bill. We fulfill the financial requirements, we fulfill the water requirements, and it's just a good system that we have. It's not broken, so I ask you, please don't try to fix it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
John Salucci, and he'll be followed by Rita Giddens.
John Salucci, I also live in San Carlos Estates, in Strike Lane, in fact. And I'd like the council to consider a little bit backing up and think about the local bill and how it was presented by Representative Botana seems almost contrarian to the whole point of Florida Statute 24-136, which used to be House Bill 701(c). For two and a half years, Representative Botana and other representatives of the state of Florida spent a lot of time looking at all special districts in the state of Florida. And the compromises were to eventually have, in particular, Section 7 of Statute 136, to have goals and performances for all special districts, mosquito districts, fire districts, water districts, doesn't matter, all 3,000-plus of them in the state of Florida. That bill was signed by Governor DeSantis, April, May of last year. It's not even a year old. So, I would ask the council to provide some written confirmation to the water district for us to present to the legislation in Tallahassee, say, "The city isn't interested in this." Of course, right now, we're about 65, 70% of people saying, "No, absolutely not," in our water district. But give a state law that's not even eight months old a chance to show whether it can work or not for all special districts, including our water district. What is the purpose of some local bill against us and mosquito district in Fort Myers Beach, which seems almost contrarian to the legislative intent that the entire state worked on? That's Florida Statute 24-136, used to be House Bill 703. It doesn't make sense to us. So, we just don't understand why they even started this. So, we'd like to get the city council to really consider, does Representative Botana even have the jurisdiction to do this kind of local bill, when we ourselves are a state-authorized water district, Statute 298? And the only one that can govern us is the governor of Florida. It's right in the statute. So, I'd just like the council to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rita Giddens.
Thank you so much. I would like to thank Mayor Gibson for responding to my email in an incredibly prompt fashion, so appreciate all your time. I am also a resident of the San Carlos Estates. I also live right on Strike Lane. I love Benita, and I love our community very much. It is quiet, and it is peaceful, and it is private, and it is lovely, and I think that's why a lot of us have chosen to live there. I don't want it to change, and I think my request to you guys is, I don't believe you have the authority to kill this bill, but I do think it's completely within your right to take this to Botana and express the concerns of your constituents, and if you can encourage him to kill it, that would be lovely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have no additional registered speakers.
Anybody else that wanted to speak on agenda items, but not the zoning items?
Hi, my name is John Kangus. I live on Lucy in San Carlos Estates. I called the city this morning, excuse me, because there was a thing about we had to register to talk by noon. I talked to somebody, I believe it was this gentleman here, and he was very taken back, like the council didn't even know about this bill that Adam has presented. Do you people know about it? It's our houses, our roads, the way we like it. We asked the city many years ago to get involved so we could pave our roads. The city denied. Didn't want nothing to do with us. So, the homeowners paved the roads. They did everything. We paid the bill, now, all of a sudden, there's a bill coming out that says, "We're going to take it from you." That's wrong. Plus, you want to take our reserve. That's wrong. We paid it, not the city of Benita. The residents of San Carlos Estates paid it. How can this be? I asked Adam Botano, "Are you going to pay me for the $21,000 that I put out for that blacktop?" "No, we're going to take it." What do you mean, "You're going to take it"? We all have $21,000 or more, depending on how much property you have, involved in these roads. And I sure the heck don't like it. I don't think anybody in here likes it. That's why this place is filled. And I tell you what, I invite every one of you to come out, and we'll go door-to-door, like I've been doing for the last two weeks, and meet the people. I met some really cool people, and not a one of them, not a one, marked yes for this bill. Everybody is no. And I really, truly invite every one of you. You'll have fun. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Belinda Zivich, Strike Lane resident for 33 years. I am also here to just let you know that we are extremely opposed to this referendum that Mr. Botana has put up. Not sure how we got here, just want you to know that it's not something that we want. We love the city of Benita Springs, but we really don't want you to take over our roads. We don't want you to be involved in the district in any way, shape, or form. You can come visit us, though. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way. And there are some other petitions going out there that we don't agree with what those other petitions have stated, how the approach has been taken. We want to keep that neighborhood the way it is. And I do know that there is a town hall meeting set up for February the 25th. We are graciously going to await for that meeting. And I do know, per conversation that I had with Mr. Botana myself today, that he can squash this bill if he feels comfortable with what is happening in our district. And so, we will continue to support the board, with the board doing what they need to do as far as the district is concerned, and hope that after the referendum is brought up to him at the town meeting, that we can get him to squash that bill on that day. We just ask for your support to stand behind us in keeping our neighborhood the way it is. You didn't want us 20 years ago, I said this last month, I know you don't really want us still. So, keep us the way we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we want to.
Mr. Mayor, is there any more public comment first?
I'm sure there is. Public comment? We're still in public comment, if you...
Is there anyone else who should speak on agenda items?
Can the folks in the lobby hear us?
Yeah.
Everybody in the lobby's good? No more public comment?
Okay. The reason I was asking is if you would be open to potentially hearing 10A, which is the discussion of the bill, while all these people are still here and not making them wait until three zoning things, because they'll never see it, probably. I don't want to throw monkey wrench in things. I don't think it would really screw anything up, but then they don't have to sit through three zoning things, and I think we can put their mind to ease if they can hear us discuss our thoughts on it. So, that would be my request. We still do the awards and everything like that, but then, my request would be that we move 10A to the front end and let them hear from us before we get into the zoning process, which, as we know, sometimes can be, you know...
I would second that.
As long as we're very brief in our discussion, because I don't think it was going to be a very long discussion, anyway, because I don't believe any of us are really in favor of it.
But then, they can get out of here without...
Correct, yeah. So, if everybody else...
I want them to stay all night.
You guys don't get to leave now if we do this.
Do we have consensus on it?
That's a lie.
Okay. All right, so, we'll move it after the presentations. Okay, so, public comments over. Presentations, proclamations. First up, Councilmember Carr.
Okay. I have the pleasure tonight of presenting a proclamation to the Florida League of Women Voters of Lee County. So, if you all would come up and join me.
Whereas, the League of Women Voters of Lee County, Inc., was established December 1949 and celebrated its 75th anniversary in December 24th. So, this is a silver year. Whereas, the League of Women Voters of Lee County, Inc., is a nonpartisan organization, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties at any level of government, while consistently addressing vital issues of concern to its members and the public. And whereas, the League of Women Voters of Lee County, Inc., promotes informed and engaged participation in government and strives through education and advocacy to enhance understanding of major public policy issues, including housing affordability, wise management of natural resources, economic and social justice, public education, gun violence, and access to comprehensive health care. And whereas, for 75 years, the League of Women Voters of Lee County, Inc., has been a pivotal organization in our community, empowering everyone to participate in our democracy by registering voters and providing nonpartisan election information, voters' guides, and candidate forums. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that on behalf of the city of Benita Springs does hereby recognize and commend the League of Women Voters of Lee County, Inc., for their invaluable contributions, and extend our heartfelt congratulations and gratitude on their 75th anniversary, done on this day, 5 February 19, I'm sorry, 2025. Do you want to say something?
Just a couple of words.
I'm sorry, I didn't introduce you.
Okay, I'm Sandy Frank, and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters, and I would like to thank you very much on behalf of all of our league members, some of whom are with me today, for this honor and recognition. I'd also like to congratulate you on your 25th anniversary, which is awesome, and we look forward to working with you in the future on areas of mutual interest, including affordable housing and preservation of natural resources, and engaging citizens in issues that affect their lives. So, thank you very much on behalf of the league.
And again, thank you.
Maybe council members should stand. Thank you. All right, Lieutenant Bruton. So, tonight, we are just doing some recognition for the shop with a cop this past December. The local sheriff's department gets with some different groups to get some money together, and then they invite the kids from a few of the different schools to come in, and they get to do some shopping with them. But I'll let Lieutenant Bruton tell you more about that.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm sure everybody was a little shocked when they walked in and saw this huge sea of green behind them. All right? Not only is this the safest building in Benita Springs, but the reason that everybody's here tonight is the Lee County Sheriff's Office, as I'm sure you've seen on social media and stuff like that, we do a lot of work around Christmas. We do a lot of shop with a cop programs, looking out for youth, underprivileged kids. We try to make sure that we're involved with the community. One of the things that Benita Springs gets is they provide the extra deputies with Benita Springs Community Policing Unit, and we take pride in that. So, although the Lee County Sheriff's Office does this, every precinct in the county does it throughout the year, we try to go above and beyond every year. And the reason that we can do that and succeed is because of our involvement with the community. We have several members of the community here. Just to briefly go over everybody, kind of do a soft intro. Mike Robinson from the Cafe of Life in Yachty back here in the back row. We have Nicole and Katie from Target, who are an intricate part of this as well. Principal Jones and Andrea from Benita Charter that are here with us. And then, also, can't go without the chief back here, Chief Greg DeWitt from Benita Fire. All of these people played an intricate role. We did 101 families and kids. We took most of these families shopping at Target, where these kids were provided $200 to go on a shopping spree, whatever they wanted. And we're talking about families affected by the hurricane, kids that weren't going to have a Christmas. These were identified usually from our local schools, families that we have come in contact with. Obviously, sometimes that happens during our rounds and rotations, but it's that connection that we're able to build with the community. We could not make this happen without the involvement of everybody. You'll see these guys out on the streets, they're going to stop, they're going to say hi to you, they're going to talk to you. That's what we want. That's why we're here. We can prevent crime, we can prevent all kinds of different things, just from having a little bit more involvement with the community. So, I'm going to turn it back over here. I also have the commander of 4th Precinct and the Benita Community Policing Unit here, Commander Blake Lee, and we'll also be doing something a little bit special with him here in a little while.
Mayor.
Yeah, so, you want to call everybody up and hand them out?
Absolutely.
All right, so, first up, Target.
So, Nicole and Katie.
Thank you for everything you did. Yeah, we need Springs Fire and Rescue.
From Benita Charter, it's going to be Principal Jones and Andrea. And there's one more on the back. I didn't get the name yet. That was my fault.
Carol. I'm Joan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you guys so much. And from the Cafe of Life, Mike Robinson and Yachty. There's also several members of the community who donated to the sheriff's office to make this happen. We're still reaching out to everybody. By all means, we're going to recognize everybody we can. The direct involvement with the city, though, I can't be thankful enough for our relationship with the city, mayor, and the council that we have here before us. They help us succeed as a unit and succeed as a city.
Yeah, just wanted to say thank you again to everybody for what you do, and it's a great program, and hope to see everybody there again next year. Thank you. All right, everybody come out for a picture.
They want us up there, Chris.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you would file them back, file them back.
Go ahead.
Hi, hi.
Purdon would love to talk about that.
Absolutely. In recognition of your promotion to commander of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, in over 35 years of dedicated service in law enforcement, including nine years leading the Benita Springs Community Policing Unit, the city of Benita Springs hereby extends its heartfelt gratitude for exemplary commitment and service to our city. Your unwavering dedication has greatly enhanced the safety and well-being of our residents, and it strengthened our community. That said, if anybody knows what Benita Springs was like 10 years ago downtown, and you know what it's like right now, this guy and the men and women behind us are the people we have to thank for that. So, with your promotion, I wanted to make sure it was recognized. You are appreciated more than you know, my friend.
Thank you.
We'll be here for a while. Absolutely. Well, first of all, I would, I'd love to introduce my beautiful wife, Lori, my son, Bryce, and my son, Blazer. They're here today, joining us. Come on up, please. So, just real quick, mayor, city council, and our amazing community, thank you very much. I'm very honored and I'm humbled with this recognition. Those of you that know me, know that's not what I'm about. It's all about our community and what we do. Back in 1993, I started with the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and I started the Benita Springs Substation, little substation down there at the Banyan Tree. And it was old then, okay? And, but either way, what Benita Springs was back then to what it is today is literally day and night. And that's not all as a result of, you know, the sheriff's office and our deputies. It's really as a result of, think about this, when I started, Benita Springs as a city did not exist. And then, of course, we were there, and we worked together with the whole process to, you know, for it to become a city, and it's evolved ever since. So, mayor, city council, you guys do an amazing job each and every day to go ahead and make the city, you know, what it is. And then, again, the community. That's what it's all about. You look at downtown, anybody that hasn't been downtown, it's amazing. If you went down there, you saw what not only the city did, but what the businesses did for Christmas. It's incredible. I mean, it's one of those towns that you will actually travel to somewhere in Florida just to go ahead and see the lights. I mean, it was really that nice. So, either way, this is all a joint effort of everybody involved, and I want to thank the men and women that I work with each and every day. They're awesome. They're here, they work real hard. But again, the point is, this is a community event, this is what we do, and this is the success that we have. And of course, my success would not exist without my beautiful wife and my two amazing sons. So, I thank God for them each and every day. Thank you all. God bless.
I wrote down one thing, these people hate us.
And we're getting right into the lines then, 10A, let's do it. All right, let's go.
Thank you, everybody. All right, so we are moving up item 10A on the San Carlos Estates Water District. Councilmember Bogaz can't be here tonight, so instead I'm gonna kick this off for her. Mainly, we have this on the agenda because we know how upset all of you are out there with this bill, and we wanted to give you opportunities to voice your concerns. So that's why, that's why it's on the agenda, so you can come and make public comment. Representative Botana is having a town hall meeting on February 25th at 5:30 PM at the fire district out on Bonita Grande Drive. So that is the best place for you guys to be and talk about what you want or don't want, but because it's on the agenda, we will, we will discuss it up here also. So who wants to kick it off?
What time is the town hall?
5:30 on February 25th on Bonita Grande Drive. Councilwoman Carr, if you want to start.
Okay. Well, I want to, speaking personally, I was shocked when I read this. I thought it was a bill, and Derek pointed out, no, no. But it reads like, and the papers present it like it's a fait accompli, and it's like, no way, nobody in Bonita got to vote on it, it wasn't on our ballot, I mean, so it was just folks in San Carlos Park? Why do they want this? What is Adam doing? And then, at the prior meeting, San Carlos Parks went nothing about this, nothing. I mean, even people that were kind of contentious between each other were like, man, we never should have paved the roads. It was, there was this like real sense of community, like, it's our problem, and we'll fix it. And I was at a BSU meeting, and one of the commissioners brought it up because he had read it in the paper, and said, what's going on? What's Bonita doing? And I was said, speaking on behalf of myself, not on behalf of council, we want nothing to do. I did use the word "we," but my husband and I, we want nothing to do with this, we didn't start it, we don't know why Adam got involved in this, so I was gonna call Adam Botana, but I wanted to wait to see what fellow council people, and of course, Jesse has a close relationship with him, but Jesse had a different way of dealing with him also, which would be interesting. But I will speak for myself. San Carlos Park, we love you. Great place. Estates, estate, sorry, sorry. By the way, I like San Carlos Park too, but, okay, but there's no way that I would vote to become part of this. It isn't even worked out, there are so many problems with it, it isn't even funny, but I believe we're gonna quash it and we can move on.
No applause, we don't do any applause or any hollering out in the gallery, please. All right, thank you, Laura. And again, we want to try to keep this brief, so Councilman, or Deputy Mayor Perden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said last week, I, whoa, look at this, okay. He's on our side, he's on our side. Okay. As I said last week, San Carlos Estates, I'll look at you and I'll say it. This is not a city-driven issue, okay? This is not, I heard somebody, do you guys know what's going on? Well, we know what's going on, like you know what's going on, you know? We're after your reserves, promise we're not. We're after your roads, I promise we're not. There is, you guys are doing, you guys are taking care of yourselves just fine, and I love, I love the spirit of wanting to continue that, and frankly, this is, again, you can put your mind at ease that this is not a situation, you know, we're getting all kinds of emails and letters, why are you guys trying to do this? What's your rush? What's your hurry? Well, I don't know, we don't have one, so to be honest with you, we don't. I've seen signs, and I spoke to the president of the organization because I wanted to clear this up too, I saw these signs about strike lane, right? Here's the deal, there's no intent from the city side to do anything in strike lane. So we should, first of all, let's not convolute the two issues, right? So the bill to stick us together and the idea of strike lane are two separate things totally, and neither one are city-driven, okay? We don't have a budget item for strike lane, your council member has never brought it up, there's never been interest expressed by anybody on this board, and if you look through our CIP, which is our long-term budgeting where we put in processes for roads, it's not in there. So there was something along the lines of, we need to build the $7,000 sign to send a message to the city so they know. Don't waste your money, we know, and we're not trying to do it. So use those hard-earned dollars on something different. I'm glad you guys are all here, and I'm glad we were able to bump it to the front so you guys could just hear directly from us. We're not trying to do anything with strike lane, we're not trying to take y'all over, and we're here with y'all, we're here with y'all. So I appreciate you guys coming out, and that's, and one more thing that is, from an honesty standpoint, I just want to put this out there. I don't know that we do a letter to Botana and tell him it's a horrible idea as a city, and the reason why is we're gonna ask him for a bunch of stuff, for the city. So this is a fight that you guys are having with him, we have not indicated we want to be involved, at the same time, I don't want to provoke the person I'm about to ask for a bunch of money for storm recovery and things along those lines. Not that he would do that, but bottom line, I don't want to, I'm not poking Botana, but at the same time, I'm not trying to take y'all, okay? So I think that is as much clarity as I can possibly give, and I really hope that it helps with you guys, but thank you guys for coming out.
Thank you. Anybody else want to, remember to use the buttons if you want to speak, so I know. It works now?
Yes.
Everybody? Jim?
Yep, I support the audience tonight in terms of the attendance here. I think this has built from a handful of emails representing both sides of the argument, and I think that this needs to continue on the 25th, and similarly, it needs to go ahead and continue with your letters and emails directly to your legislators at the state level. I think to see the number of people here and the number that you represent is worth your time and effort to continue the fight.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Folick?
Thank you, mayor. Again, to echo what Jesse said, the bottom line is, we didn't start this, I don't think we can even finish it, what we can tell you is that many people in this room know more about this than we do right now. I'm really curious to ask one question, that is, why? Why did this occur? How is it gonna benefit you? And when we hear that, hopefully on the 25th, I think a lot of us will have a better frame of reference, but love to see this kind of turn out at all our meetings because there would be a lot more disinformation that wouldn't happen, because this is the kind of communication you can get if you come, and the only ask I'd have all of you is, go and tell your neighbors what you heard tonight. Don't listen to the person who said they heard it from a guy, who knows a guy? Tell them what you heard tonight. So we appreciate deeply what Adam Botana does for our community, believe we do, he's one of the hardest working people in Tallahassee, and we don't want to pretend that we're afraid of him, but he's never made us, put us in a position where we need to be. So be patient, listen, and if you hear something, ask the right source, either your council person or our fine mayor, but not the guy next door or a guy that knows a guy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just hold your ground and be patient, and this will go away because we don't want anything to do with it. So enough said.
Yeah, as it's been stated, it wasn't city-initiated. The legislative delegation, I think, really only moved it on because the way the bill's written, everybody in San Carlos Estates has to, a majority of you guys have to vote yes, and in addition to that, the entire city has to vote yes. So if one of those two or neither of those two happen, it won't happen. So I don't think it's got a very good shot, especially if the majority of you guys are against it, it shouldn't have any shot if you guys don't want it, so. Just to let you know, we're, you know, we're with you guys, and thank you for coming out.
Don't leave.
Again, sorry, no clapping, thank you. All right, so public hearings. Do we need a break, or? Okay, we'll take a really quick five-minute break. Mr. Mayor? Okay, meeting's back in session. Item seven, public hearings, item A. Mike?
This is a zoning resolution of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, approving a special exception for outdoor consumption on premises associated with a four COP restaurant group three use located within the US 41 corridor overlay pursuant to LDC 4-898 located at 25355 South Tamiami Trail, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34135, and providing for an effective date.
And mayor and council, there was an error for anyone in the, in the audience who saw this, the packet version has a previously saved draft of it, which was from a prior special exception we used where it was a car wash, was listed somewhere into the, Councilman Fitzpatrick gets the award for that one, for finding that one, and so his steak dinner will be on me. And then, so that's been changed for the adoption package.
Okay.
And at this time, if there's, we have, the next three items actually are all quasi-judicial, so if there's anyone here who isn't speaking on any of these items, if you're a concerned resident, if you're an applicant or their team, I'm just gonna ask you all to stand to be sworn at this time. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor, council, Mary Zizo, Community Development. For our first case today, you have a special exception request for outdoor consumption on premises at the restaurant Naples Coastal Kitchen located at 25355 South Tamiami Trail, but also goes by 25265 Chamber of Commerce. This specific location was previously occupied by Sorella's Restaurant due to our land development code. Because the site was vacant for over six months, they had to come back in for outdoor consumption on premises approval, and that's because they're within 500 feet of the Discovery Day Academy, which is a non-commercial school and daycare facility. Laid out in your staff report, you see that it is a special exception, they had to satisfy the criteria, they've provided us site plans to show compatibility, and we have provided conditions that we feel are safeguards for this specific facility. I can allow... I can elaborate further on any of that, or if you have specific questions or would like to hear from the applicant at this time, we can go ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion.
Any members of the public who should speak on this item?
Any public comment on this item? Discussion. Well, I.
Roll call?
No. When the school came in, I remember I was up here, and this was the exact thing that I was trying to keep from happening, that a school went into a commercial plaza that was allowed to have alcohol. And I voted against the school, not because I didn't want the school, but because I didn't want this problem to happen to where they'd have to come before council to have their alcohol again when they were allowed to have it before, so. But, no, that's a roll call.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
For the record, two of us voted that way.
Yeah.
And I am in favor.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item B.
This is the second reading of a zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, rezoning approximately two acres from the residential plan development, RPD zoning district, to a residential plan development, RPD, to allow six single-family units and one deviation located at the corner of Wisconsin Street and Lawhan Family Road, address 9650 Lawhan Family Road, strap number 34-47-25-B2-00259.0040, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34135, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Council. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the record. Just to give a brief synopsis, and then we can tell us where you want to go from here. It is a request to rezone from a previous residential plan development to a new one. The purpose of the rezone is because the plan associated with the previous zoning has expired, so their options were to either re-up the existing plan or propose a new one. They're proposing a new one with a slight modification. It's six single-family homes plus a retention area for drainage. It's in a single-family home area, well, it's an area that has single-family homes and duplexes. Zoning Board heard this case and voted unanimously to approve it. There is one deviation requested for the perimeter to allow them to build essentially to the same setbacks as conventional single-family homes. So because of that, staff didn't see an issue with it, neither did your zoning board. With that, I could turn it over to the applicant if you would like to hear a presentation, since this is an adoption hearing, or if you just want to ask questions, we're good either way.
Or make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any public comments on this item?
Discussion, questions?
I just wonder, are they gonna call it Terry Acres or Lawhan Acres? Nice to see you, Terry.
They're gonna hyphenate it.
I'm sorry, before we vote, I take back my second, and I'd like to hear what Nigel says on fifth. This is District 5, correct?
Yep.
Could I hear your thoughts on this?
Well, I was thinking while you were speaking, Mike, that it was probably 16, 18 years ago. I can't see Terry, but he's there. When we walked that property and talked about how one day it would be nice to see that developed in that community, and the fact that you're putting single-family homes in there, I'm delighted in the fact that they're affordable. I mean, it's not low-rent housing, but people will be able to buy those homes, so I applaud you and thank you.
I'm good with my second again.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C.
This is the second reading of a zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, rezoning approximately six acres from the residential plan development, RPD zoning district, to a residential plan development, RPD, to develop up to 10 dwelling units located at 27400 Arroyo Road, strap number 33-47-25-B2-00201.0040, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34135, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Mary?
Good evening again, Council. Mary Zizo, Community Development. This is a request for a rezone at this site. Previously, it was approved for 20 single-family homes. This request is for 10 single-family homes. Outlined in the staff report, you'll see the recommended conditions. We do find the proposal to be compatible with the future land use, and zoning board did recommend approval, five to zero for this project as well. I have the applicant here if you'd like them to go through the presentation.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Public comment? Seeing none. Roll call.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purden.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item D.
This is the first reading of a zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, rezoning approximately eight acres from the agricultural AG-2 zoning district to a residential plan development, RPD, to allow up to 40 dwelling units and two deviations located at the northwest corner of Wisconsin Street and Pennsylvania Avenue, strap number 34-47-25-B2-00259.0040, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34135, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening again, Council. Mike Fegan for the record. This one is essentially a rehearing of a first reading related to a project where they're requesting up to 40 dwelling units, a mix of single-family homes and two family-attached, spread out over eight acres. I know when this came up previously as part of the rehearing request, it was explained that at the first reading is when you would hear the presentations from staff and the applicants, so with your permission, we would go through that today unless you feel otherwise, to sort of explain the project in a bit more detail. So it was heard by the zoning board, and it was approved by the zoning board by a vote of five to two. And I know we're sort of breaking tradition here a little bit with doing the presentations at first reading, but since this was subject to a rehearing, we felt this was an appropriate time to go forward with the presentations if you would oblige us. So with that, I would turn it over to the applicant's agent, Cannon Sandora, to go through their portion of the presentation.
Thank you so much. My name is Stefan Bolson. I represent the applicant, Mr. Bauer, over here. Mr. Bauer actually purchased that property a long time ago, and we went through the PUD application with you, and we had a little mishap in the first reading, and we really are extremely thankful that you granted us a rehearing and that we are here today for our first reading. In between, we had actually a lot of revision on our projects. We are constantly, basically every day, about thinking and planning on that project. And we took the feedback of the neighbors of Pennsylvania and Wisconsin too hard, and we thought we need to accommodate their needs and also find a solution that is like a win-win situation for everyone. And that's what we tried to accomplish, and that's why we scaled our building size a little bit down and eliminated roof terraces, so neighbors enjoy more privacy, actually. In between, we also founded an HOA because it is important that we are going to maintain the retention pond, and our retention pond is almost an acre. It is 42,000 square feet. An acre is 43,560 square feet, to be exact. And we need to maintain that lake, obviously, in perpetuity. That's very important. We actually drafted our HOA documents in a way that we provide access to South Florida management. They need to monitor that system, give feedback, and we need to work with them in perpetuity and set a financial budget for it, to pay for it in perpetuity. We assembled a team of a couple of people. Main person is basically Cannon Sandora, our architect, and we are extremely thankful for his knowledge. And our architect, Bill Glass, who is also very local in the area around the corner, has his office. Then we brought today our environmentalist, Paul Owen, and finally, our attorney, Jeff Wright. And before I hand it over to Mr. Sandora to talk a little bit more in detail about that project, I really would appreciate if you move us into the second reading. Thank you so much.
I'm Cannon Sandora. I'm the civil engineer on the project, and as Stefan said, you know, this is a, we're proposing a new upscale, safe, hurricane-resistant, well-landscape, 40-lot residential development on an eight-acre property at Pennsylvania Ave and Wisconsin Street, so. Move forward with the slideshow. So the schedule of uses for the projects are dwelling units, which include single-family detached and two-family attached, so they're zero lot line, basically each on their own lot, but they are attached on one common wall. Excavation for water retention, there's fences and walls, communication facilities, wireless, community gardens, there's signs, residential, typical residential accessories, part of the schedule of uses. So the existing zoning is AG2 for the property, and it's vacant currently, so. And then in the area, you see, in the future, land use is moderate, tends to be residential. So in the surrounding area, you see there's, as far as zoning, there's RS1, there's TCF2, RM2, AG2, and PUD zonings, which include single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily in that area. So the single-family homes are to the west, and there's duplexes to the east, as well as single-family homes, and single-family homes to the south, and to the, at the corner there, the southwest corner, you see that PUD, that's a multifamily. So feel free to ask any questions as I go, if you guys have any questions at all. So getting to the master concept plan, this is kind of the basics on the master concept plan, is we have two entrances on Wisconsin, which is how we were directed by staff from the pre-op meeting. They didn't want us to enter on Pennsylvania Ave and cause additional stop signs or whatnot. So we looped the road, and we have sidewalks on either side of the road. And then we have a water management lake, which is on the west side, which all the, all the site is able to, stormwater from the site is able to drain its way to that lake. And then we have a preserve, which is, it goes actually around the whole three sides of the site, so not Wisconsin Street, but on the west side, you see, we have wood-saved area over there, as well as on the north and south side of the site. So that provides a lot of privacy for the site. So for getting more specific on the master concept plan, it's probably the font's a little small, but maybe this is in you guys' packet, the master concept plan. So there's five acres of open space, which is 62.5% of the property. Only 40% is required. We have, as I mentioned, a 1.6-acre preserve, which is 20% of the site. The minimum lot sizes are 32 by 95 for attached, and 60 by 97 for unattached. The maximum building height is 35 feet above the FEMA base flood elevation, which is per code for the future land use. The parking, there's two, at least two spaces per driveway, per unit, so, and plus they have garages. Now, getting into the drainage, the entire development will be surrounded by a 25-year, three-day storm event elevation containment berm, which has a elevation of 6.59 feet NAVD. So it contains all, up to the 25-year, three-day storm. That's a South Florida Water Management District requirement. And the site will drain through yard drains and catch basins into the retention pond, which is over half an acre. And the water will only leave the site at a 0.44 CFS through a three-inch bleeder, which drains into the existing ditch on the west side of the property running towards the Imperial River. So a very small amount of drainage is able to get off-site, and for that, anything less than that 25-year, three-day storm event, and it drains into a ditch which is on the west side towards the Imperial River. And so, one note I wanted to make on that is runoff from the property will not drain into the existing drainage structures on Pennsylvania Ave and Wisconsin. It's not gonna drain towards either of those. For landscaping, it will meet all LDC requirements. Three heritage trees proposed to be removed have been approved by the Tree Advisory Board. And landscaping and bollards, if desired by the neighbor, will be added across the street of the entrances to provide buffer for neighbors on Wisconsin Street. So where our street ends close to Wisconsin Street, if the neighbors want some additional privacy, which has come up at the neighborhood information meetings, we're willing to provide any landscaping and any bollards that they would want us to add in. And common areas such as landscaping and drainage pond will be maintained by the HOA. So as Stefan mentioned, we're gonna do it. We're gonna have an HOA. So the total upland area, including if we mitigated all the wetlands, we're in the process, the mitigation process with South Florida Water Management District, that would 7.87 acres, and the maximum total density based on the future land use is 5.8 units per acre. So when you, 7.87 times 5.8 units per acre gives you to a maximum of 45 units. We're proposing 40. So the deviations and justifications for this, so we're, the deviation that we're proposing is a 30-foot preserve buffer to 20 feet, so that's deviating from two code requirements. That's about a 30-foot feet down to a 20-foot buffer, and for, one of them is related to environmental, so part of our justification is that there's no listed species. Paul Owen's here to talk about the environmental. There's no listed species that would require a large buffer, you know, to be set back in order for the listed species to thrive. And we're also providing a four-foot fence, which will be provided and maintained. And also, the building material is gonna be non-combustible concrete, which eliminates the chance of a reduced preserve buffer causing a building fire. So there's no trees coming down or something with a lesser buffer, you know, it's not gonna catch the building on fire. So getting into the traffic study that I completed, and it's been reviewed by staff and part of their recommendation, there's no significant impact to the roadways except Wisconsin Street north of Pennsylvania, because it's very low traffic at this time. So when you look at the chart, you know, the percent impact is less than 2% all the way down, except for you see the Wisconsin Street north of Pennsylvania Ave, and that's about a 4%, which because there's not a lot of traffic on that road. So when you add 26 trips, which is what we've determined for the PM peak hour trips, you know, it's still, I'm gonna show you guys the rest of this, it's still very low. So getting down to table four, all roadway segments have available capacity to bank the additional trips due to the development. So when you look at the second-to-last column, you see the available capacity is still multiple hundred trips that you're adding, that you still have available. And when you get to this last table here that I'm gonna show, when you add in the additional trips, for instance, Wisconsin Street north of Pennsylvania Ave, when you add in those 26 trips due to the development, you still have 507 remaining trips which can be added. So basically, there's ample capacity for this development to happen. So basically, there's there's ample capacity for this development to happen. And here's a little table showing the additional trips, how they'll be added, the twenty-six PM peak hour trips. You know, you have thirteen trips coming from Benita Beach Road, you have six trips coming from the east, seven trips coming from the west, turning toward into Wisconsin Street into the development. So if you guys don't have any questions, we can continue on with the with the architecture bills to go over.
I had one question about the wireless facility. Does that mean cellphone tower or what are we talking about?
No, no, no cellphone tower. It would just simply be, you know, like, you know, underground Wi-Fi or sentry link or, you know, something like that.
All right, just want to make sure.
We appreciate you letting us present this again. How do we flip slides? Is it this little button?
Yes.
I'm a neophyte. Oh, it buzzes too. The architecture is pretty simple. We tried to go fairly modern with the shell of the buildings. This is the single family. The the lower level is basically sacrificial. So we're going to have a two hundred foot entry, which is FEMA requirement, no no more air conditioning room than that. And the rest of the ground floor is parking and storage or whatever, no no occupied space. All the living floors are up above. When you looked at the site plan, these are all on individual lots. And we we tried very hard to put the single family all the way around the perimeter and have all the multi the attached units in the center. So that from Wisconsin or Pennsylvania or wherever you were looking at it, you're seeing single family houses, not the attached, if there was any concern. This is the attached unit. We we've we've moved it down in response to comments by some of the neighbors that they were they were concerned. We had a sort of entertainment deck on the roof and they they were very concerned. So it's it's gone now. But these are these are the way I build buildings, are very, very high R value, VRF air conditioning, the way the way of the future, not not the way of the past. I'm building a couple of houses right now on Winter Park Place. I invite you to go by and look at them. They're AEC concrete block and SIP panels, which is a little unusual for this climate, but they'll be real comfortable. That's really all I have.
So neither the multifamily nor the single family will have the patios on the roof, right?
The the single family has a small patio on the on the second floor. It's not very big.
But but not not.
Not on the top.
Not above the.
And we that was one of the comments that just kept drumming. And it was important for us to be responsive to the people who were commenting to us. So we we took it off.
Thank you.
Okay.
Paul?
My name is Paul Owen. I'm the environmental consultant for the project. I'm with Owen Environmental Consulting. So as a consultant, we've obtained a formal binding jurisdictional determination from the South Florida Water Management District. We've assisted with the South Florida Water Management District ERP permitting process. We conducted a protected species survey and also conducted a Florida Bonnet de Batte acoustic survey for this project. The site consists of wetland hardwoods and pine flatwoods that are heavily invaded by exotic vegetation. Site has been heavily disturbed in the past over the years. The western portion of the site contains a manmade ditch that runs north and south that's about point one three acres. The central portion of the property contains a two point six three acre exotic infested wetlands. This is a very poor quality area that consists of solid two point one four acres of solid exotic vegetation and point four nine acres of hydric pine flatwoods with heavy amounts of exotics also. So the this wetland is infested by exotic vegetation, including Malaluka, Java plum, early focaccia, Brazilian pepper, seaside mahogany, and old were climbing fern, and will continue to have more and more infestation and will eventually take over. There won't be any exot or natives in there at all at some point. So the South Florida Water Management District issued a formal binding jurisdictional determination on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and an ERP application has been submitted and is under review. At this time, all environmental issues have been resolved with the Water Management District. And once the ERP is issued, it will allow the applicant to directly impact two point zero acres of wetlands and will require zero point seven nine freshwater wetland mitigation credits to be purchased from Panther Island Mitigation Bank Extension Expansion, sorry. The current site plan includes impacts to two point zero eight acres of very low quality wetlands and the preservation and restoration of zero point five five acres of wetlands and one point two acres of uplands, which I will try to point to there. Site plan is on the right. A portion of that is showing the restoration of habitat and the other patch is what is being preserved. It includes point five four acres of wetland restoration and point nine one acres of upland restoration, which will have all the exotic vegetation removed and will be planted with native wetland vegetation, as detailed in the preservation and restoration plan, which has been submitted to the city. So there were a total of fifteen snags, dead trees that have potential cavities in there that could have possibly be used by bats. We didn't see any signs of any activity by bats. But the South Florida Water Management District wanted us to do an acoustic survey, which requires specialty equipment, and we had to monitor it for for four nights and review the data. The result of that is that there were no vetted Florida Bonnet de Batte, which is a listed species. None of them were detected. And also during our protected species survey, we did not observe any listed species or their signs on this property. This is an infill property. There's there's nothing left in there except for urbanized wildlife like raccoons, armadillos, that sort of thing. So if anyone has any other questions, any questions, I'm here to answer any.
Any questions?
I do, I do have. For point of clarification, in terms of the timeframe required for water ten water retention, does that fall under South Florida water management and the twenty-five year rule? Or is it our our more conservative retention policy in terms of the retention pond?
The the city's retention policy would would be on top of the twenty-five year.
So that would so the water retention needs to be consistent with our hundred year storm event then? Is that correct?
That is a question for your for the project civil engineer canon. That is not my area of expertise, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Please.
From here?
No, you have to you have to do it in the mic, sorry.
We'll we'll have to comply with all city, you know, LDC requirements and whatnot. So if South Florida, so if it's more than, you know, we're not, you know, we're going to comply with all of them. Like, you know, we're we've been through it with South Florida Water Management District. They said twenty-five years. So if it's hundred year for.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that after Irma and Ian, the city got very aggressive in terms of the storm water management and flow and so forth. And 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 I just wanted to make sure that you'd fall under the city and it's more aggressive than the twenty-five year storm event.
And we can definitely do that.
Any other questions?
Motion to move to second.
It automatically goes now. Anybody else? Any more presentation? Any public comment? Does staff have anything to say?
Mike Fegan again for the record. All of you look very familiar, like I've just seen you. I can go ahead and go forward with my presentation as well. The applicant did a pretty good job of summarizing. If there's any additional clarifications you want from staff, I'm happy to provide them. Again, with this being the first reading, if you have any additional questions or concerns, the second reading isn't going to be scheduled until your March meeting. So we have some time to discuss it and hash out additional details if you think you need them. So I can go forward with my presentation or just address questions. It's the pleasure of counsel.
Do what you want.
I actually met with Mike and the developer and they I compliment them on the fact that they listened to the residents, they took some things out, what they're doing with water mitigation. And that's my neighborhood. The place is a mess. I don't call it anything to do with bats. It has a lot to do with mosquitoes. Be glad to see them finally gone. But no, they were very they were very attentive and they did not take an aggressive stance with the city, which I appreciated.
I think I would note, actually, just from a staff standpoint, you know, this application started back in late two thousand twenty-three, and here it is, February twenty-five, and you're you're now seeing it. So there was a lot of work that was done over the last year and some odd months to get it to this point. So when when staff does these types of reviews, you know, there's a lot of going back and forth with the applicant, taking many impacts into consideration before the recommendation is provided. So just want to make sure that's clear.
Anybody else have any concerns or want to Jim?
I I before being elected, I had the opportunity to observe the zoning meeting that this was in. And what I'm pleasantly surprised is the how well that you folks have listened to the concerns expressed by the neighborhood. Of particular note, the the adoption of an HOA form to go ahead and take responsibility for both the roads and the retention pond. Two, the removal of the rooftop decks. Three, the number of parking spots, which an issue was raised during that whole thing. The addition of a fence around the redemption pond of four feet. That's great. And other than the hundred year versus a twenty-five year event, a lot of work's been done since this initial meeting back several months ago. So thank you.
Chris?
I'm good.
Anybody else have concerns that we should bring up before their next meeting? All right.
If you think of anything, you know how to reach us.
All right, we're good.
Thank you.
We'll see it, second reading. Thank you. All right, and item D was deferred to March fifth at five thirty. So we are on to eight consent agenda.
I'd like to.
Yes.
I'd like to pull item F.
Any anyone else want to pull anything? Okay.
Which item was that? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry?
Item was that, I'm sorry.
Item F.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay.
Motion to approve.
All right, we got a motion to approve the remaining. Second. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fuller.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
All right. Item F. Chris?
Yeah, I may need Derek to help educate me on this a little bit. The the assemblage master plan, explain to me what an what this an assemblage plan is.
I had to recently follow up on that myself for the we did the downtown Imperial Crossing property. So the the city's downtown form base code lays out, has established land uses and effectively works towards the form and shape of development, making sure that compatibility arises from the intensity of the different uses. So in this situation, the uses on the properties, the Tennessee Street, those are already established, their uses by right. The assemblage plan is essentially pulling together to make sure that other other elements of the properties involved, open space, access, all the implementation of the form base code are followed. It's administrative review because the code is obviously it's it's form based. The entire purpose of it is to get past the general special exceptions, PD, things that we would normally do. And and so at this point, the purpose of why it was it gets sent to council, I'm not sure that was designed before my involvement. My guess is it's really just to make sure that you understand it. But treat the way I would look at it is treating it very similar to a plat. It's a ministerial function. You're making sure that, you know, they follow the technical codes. But the assemblage plan is really to make sure that according to the code, that all those open space buffers, walkways, all the things that are called for in the form base code are implemented properly and reviewed by the staff.
Okay. So the as I understand, the food truck issue or the number of food trucks is modified in a twenty twenty ordinance, twenty dash five, I think it was. And that may have been, I can't remember, but I think that may have been in connection with trying to sell the the property that is now rooftop, that we wanted to adjust something downtown to allow food trucks because the Magnus family, for example, had plans to put food trucks on the rooftop. My consideration, my my concern is, is that now we're in twenty-five. We've had five years' experience with how that ordinance is operated. So if we wanted to take our experience from that five years and change anything concerning that ordinance, would this assemblage project, for example, be grandfathered?
So.
With anything with a new, for example, you know, as I look at this thing, they've got eleven parking places for their for their what they're trying to do with perhaps food What seems to be best practice is what was done at rooftop with respect to hooking up to gas lines instead of using propane and so forth. So if we wanted to go back to that ordinance and sort of raise the bar a bit with respect to food trucks and try to put some restrictions, improvements over what was done five years ago in that ordinance, are we precluded from doing that under the land development code? Or could we, as a council, say, you know, you know, we want to take this five years' worth of experience and beef up that particular ordinance?
So I just because I I wasn't thinking about the mobile code, so I just pulled up ordinance twenty oh five. So in 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 two thousand, whether it was twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, legislature preempted local governments with respect to the regime that the city previously enacted, which was we had a limited number of food truck vendors that were authorized to operate within the city. We scrapped that. We are still authorized to to regulate mobile food vendors and location. So the ordinance twenty twenty-five prohibits mobile home mobile food vendors from being in residential districts, except when there is a special exception or temporary use permit. And then that's our general temporary use standard. So this would be like if Benita Bay was having an event or something like that, or somewhere else was having a special event, they might be able to have them. The downtown district may have diff has different regulations, and the code lays out that mobile food vending is authorized in two different transects, at least at least two different transects. And the Magnus property, they received a special exception. Now, under the the mobile food, the mobile vending code, special exceptions are required for residential areas and some other requirements. But our downtown form base code requires a special exception for a food truck park when it is in the core district. This district that this is in, which is on the outline, there is, I think it's either food truck park or or food trucks are allowed as of right without the special exception process.
I'll go ahead and provide.
Fegan probably knows more because I was this, I was not prepared for that question. I apologize. I just remember what Magnus wanted to say.
I I can clarify. Thank you, Mike Fegan, for the record. So just just to be clear, food truck parks and or food truck vendors in terms of individual vending pads and placement is not permitted throughout the entirety of your downtown district. It is limited to this specific innovation district only. If any food trucks are going to be located in the core or anything like that, it would be a food truck park that would come before you as a special exception. The thought was, with this being the innovation district and this being essentially from the DPZ standard and what was adopted of the form base code, this is a district where there aren't specific design regulations for how to activate the property. That's. to activate the property. That's one of the reasons why these concept plans, if you will, come before you. When anybody wants to do a project in this very specific innovation district area, because there aren't necessarily strict architectural guidelines for how to lay out the property, uh, it goes through a vetting process and it sort of comes before you for your final blessing, if you will. What they are allowed to do is they are allowed to have up to two individual mobile food vendors onsite, if it's part of their proposed plan. But that is not something that is permitted throughout the entire downtown district. It is limited to just your innovation area. Um, so I, I hope that addresses what the, what the question is.
The, well, the, the, the additional question that Councilman Corey is asking is, if we were to change the code now, would they be grandfathered? The, the answer generally would be yes, because if it's permitted right now, we would, unless there was a code change in progress, they've already applied, they've gone through the review, they're at the final step now. So generally, yes, they would be considered vested to that right.
So, we, you know, because they're in the innovation district, so we would have no ability to say you need so many parking places, you need to be hooked up to natural gas as opposed to propane, those kinds of things?
Oh, no, that, site considerations are still absolutely on the table.
Okay.
This, this is just whether or not the use would be allowed or not.
Okay.
Because that twenty, two thousand twenty-dash-five ordinance not only dealt with site considerations, it also dealt with whether, where is allowed. And then the question also becomes a, a little bit an element of that ordinance was dealing with kind of the temporary mobile ones that were moving around the city in different locations versus ones that would be like a, more like what, what the Magnus has had downtown, a park that's a permanent facility where they're operating at.
Right.
I would also note that, uh, and having spoken more with the applicant about this, who is here today, if you want to hear from him, um, that the purpose of those two pads, in addition to potentially housing food vendors, it's, it's meant to be more of a flex space. Uh, so for an example, I, I think the reason why you don't see like the proposed, uh, gas hookups and things like that on the site plan that you have is because they wanted the flexibility to be innovative with how they use those particular pads. So for an example, if they wanted to bring in, say, a craft jewelry person one day, who does the handmaking of the jewelry and put them on the pad, sort of like when you're at the mall and you see those center kiosks, uh, with the jewelry sales, and if they wanted the ability to do that, maybe for an event, or if they're going to have a ticketed event at the container bar, they want to be able to put a ticket stand on one of the pads. So it really is meant to be more of a flexible pad space location, but yes, the food truck would be a component that they would like, uh, and the proposed approval does contemplate that as well.
Jim, uh, do you use the button? We, we have other, yeah, hit the button. If, if you're done, Chris, it's, uh, Laura's next.
Oh, I was just wondering, like, could you also do a pop-up store? I mean, it's, it's pretty open.
That's, that's, yes. That, that, that would be their intent, to be very flexible, whether it's retail, additional commercial, food, uh, that, that's what their goal is for those two particular pads.
That's great. Thank you.
And Nigel?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mike, since you're more of an authority figure than I am, would you, just for the people that are watching at home, you are, and the people here, what are the geographic boundaries of the innovation area?
Absolutely. So it is, uh, the east and west boundaries are Old Forty-One and Industrial Street. Uh, the north boundary is Tennessee, which is where this is, and the south boundary is Benita Beach Road. So it's a very small, if you will, outskirts segment of the downtown district where this is permitted.
Next, Mike.
You're welcome.
Jim?
Yeah, just, just for a point of clarification, um, when you made reference to it's, uh, the, the area is allowed up to two food trucks, but they have, do they have to be designated upfront and have to be there? I mean, now, the, the discussion went from, you have to declare two, to flex space. And I'm just trying to clarify, you know, do you have to declare upfront that it's going to be two food trucks?
So what they did need to declare is what their intent was for the proposed pads. They wanted the ability to have food trucks on both of the proposed pads, so that is why they would need to declare. That, and that goes back to the fact that this approval is tied to the concept plan that is before you. So if they want to make changes to that plan, essentially, they're restarting the process again. Because again, there, there are no set standards for how to develop in the innovation district. It's meant to be innovative. It's meant to be different from parcel to parcel. So they did need to declare that that was going to be the purpose of the two pads, so that they would like that opportunity. Uh, it is afforded to them by right in the code for the innovation district, but they also wanted to make it clear that in addition to that, they wanted the ability to have those two pads also serve as flex spaces.
Okay, and then my follow-up is then on, on, on parking. Uh, right now, we have, uh, ten spaces and one handicap. Um, does this kind of pair up to what design and use is planned for this area?
So the parking is based on the proposed seating area for the bars or the proposed food truck parks, because not all of it is going to be accessible public space. You have a lot of spots on the site that's going to be for storage purposes or for back-of-house purposes for the proposed bar areas. So that square footage isn't counted towards what the overall parking requirement would be. Also keeping in mind that with this being a downtown area and with the focus of it being more walkable, bikeable, things like that, they are offsetting some of their parking with, uh, additional bike racks and sidewalk connections and things of that nature. Uh, so this is something that also gets reviewed at time of development order for additional parking requirements. Um, and there is a matrix in your downtown district that if they have a combination of uses onsite, because the other thing is they are proposing to, um, caretaker's residences as well to help oversee the operations of the container bar area, uh, there's a matrix within your parking table that essentially allows you a little bit of a parking reduction for mixed uses that are all taking place on the same site. So we'll go through and do another, another check, of course, as part of the engineering plans, but what they're proposing does meet the code.
Jesse, any questions?
No.
Good. So with the caretaking, uh, facilities, do they use those parking spots, or are there other parking spots that that person's going to be parked in?
It's all, yeah, it's all, it's all, it's all going to be com- community spaces within. There, there should be, uh, a diagram on the site plan that is in front of you that lays out, uh, the parking and how it's parked based on the proposed uses.
Because if you-
That is included.
Two caretakers and they're there all the time, parking in two spots, now, you know, you have two fewer parking spots. Um, and my, my concern with the two food trucks is it, it just kind of sounds like a small food truck park. I really love the concept. Um, I, I love how breweries, you know, have food trucks come in and go out, they wind up using parking spots. So I do kind of like the, having the spot there for them, so you're not having to use a parking space for it. Um, I would feel a, a little better if it was only one food truck at a time, and the other one was a flex space. Um, or if it was, the, like, I know if a brewery's doing like a special event, they can have multiple food trucks there because it's a special event and not an every-night thing. Um, so, so those are my thoughts with the, with the two food trucks. You know, I would definitely feel better if it was just, just one on a nightly basis. Um, and, you know, parking just seems a little inadequate, but I guess if, if, if that's code, then, you know, we don't have a whole lot to say about that, so. But it might be something that we need to look at. Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fuller.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Did you say no?
Aye.
Oh, aye. Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Number nine, public hearings.
This is the second reading of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the Benita Springs City Code, Chapter Ten, Buildings and Building Regulations, and Chapter Twenty-four, Flood Hazard Reduction. To clarify and update definitions and regulations as necessary to remain in the National Flood Insurance Program as applied to existent, existing buildings, special flood hazard areas, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, and scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Good evening, Council. Aida Lonergan, Flood Plane Manager, for the record. This is our second reading as required, just cleaning up some outdated definitions for the best interest of the city when it comes into the long-term planning and resiliency. We are in effect deleting an outdated definition, um, that would lower our threshold to twenty-five percent over a ten-year period. I am here for any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment?
Seeing none. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
All right, item ten, mayor and council member items. We already, uh, did A, so B. Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Uh, I don't have anything. Thank you.
No, it's, uh, your Fiesta Benita.
Oh, my Fiesta Benita, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
[laughing]
I had, I already have my response written up on that. Um, I'd like to revise the scope, uh, and look at hosting the event later in the year to give more time and see if we receive more bids.
Second, definitely.
So, I mean, I love the event. You guys know I love this event always, so I just, I'd like to make sure it's as good as it can be. And I think, a little bit more time, scope adjustment, I think we're in a better spot.
Maybe try to get local.
We could get more, I mean, it'll give an oppor- it'll definitely give an opportunity for more people to bid on it.
Yeah.
And then we can go from there, so.
Great.
Yes, sir.
If you, if you, just to clarify, that under the proposed scope, um, the proposed estimated cost for the event was one hundred seventy-five thousand bucks. We'd pay them twenty for being, doing the production work.
Yep.
Um, under what the RFP was, how do the other hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars get paid for? Or what's, what's the thought process?
So, I mean, this is one of those things that, you know, it's on them to figure out how they're going to pay the bill. Essentially, they're getting the event and they get twenty thousand dollars, and it's going to cost a lot more than that. But now you have the opportunity to, as we've done in past years, we've had a group that's done, they, they sell marketing and then they sell tables and they, you know, they do a lot of things to, uh, make it an event that is not, you know, that doesn't cost them a bunch of money at the end of the day.
So the burden falls on the-
It's all on them. It's, it's completely on the company to figure out how to make it work, because it's going to be a lot more. We're giving them a piece. Here, here's a piece to start. We want you to do the event. Now, all the rest of it, that hundred and fifty, that's on you to figure out how to make that work. And we've been blessed to have, you know, a group that has done it for a number of years, and they've always made it work. And even one year, they had a global artist here, and it didn't cost us anything extra. And that's like, I don't think we've even had a global artist come to Benita before that, so, um, you know, it, it can work for them. But I mean, it's not one of those things, uh, it's not set up to be a moneymaker, you know?
No, a- and that's fine. And I, and I guess when I saw the twenty thousand and one hundred seventy-five thousand cost, and no real plan as to how-
Yep.
You know, it doesn't become our problem.
Yep.
Uh, the only thing that I'd ask is, as we go forward and look for other bids, is that, uh, they were also asking for twenty-five thousand for in-kind services, for emergency services, parks and rest staff, and marketing. And I guess my hope is that that would also be included in what they have to go ahead and generate for coverage of expenses.
And I think we can look at that. I think those were add-ons, because I don't think we originally had that in our last couple. Um, I think that was an add-on by this particular-
Yes, the RFP response, that's in there. That's, that's, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, so, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so the motion is to adjust the RFP?
Yeah, so the mo- yeah, so the motion would be, uh, yeah.
The motion would be to reject whatever bids we did receive and direct staff to work on coming up with a more expansive scope.
Oh, isn't it?
So moved. Nope, so moved.
Staff does it?
Exactly as he said.
Okay, so, does the second agree with that?
Second.
All right, then, roll call.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fuller.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Fuller.
Well, this will be very brief. Um, I'm crossing my fingers. We, uh, we hadn't heard anything until about a week and a half ago, and we now have, um, staff and, and elected, that would be, uh, Bill Ribble, our former mayor of, uh, Estero, who's now on the school board, will be representing them to meet with Mr. Rooney, Ms. Hunter, myself. Um, who else do we have on our team, Marlene?
Representatives of community development staff and the assistant city manager as well.
So the only thing I would just nod of heads, um, I'd like to draw a line that they're very much aware of and that you all feel comfortable that, too. The only thing we're asking to do is for them to replicate and, uh, allow us to keep the original facade on the old building that has the, that right there. I should just easily point that that's what we're trying to get them to replicate. And if you look at some of the renderings, it's, uh, I would say it's easy to do, but certainly not expensive, nothing in the million-dollar category. And so I'd like to just, again, hold the line and tell them that's what we want as a city. It's certainly what our residents want, and, um, I think there's a lot of people that, much like what happened here earlier this evening, don't understand that the voices would be very helpful. But I think we know as a city from the past, and I'm speaking to people that are watching this and listening, is our city, if it gets angry, we don't have pitchforks and torches, we vote. We're really, really good at that. And, um, so again, if everybody's comfortable, we're asking for them to allow us to retain that facade at, just as it looks, because we know that, that we can't rebuild the building. There's nothing, really nothing on that site, uh, because of what has occurred. So saving the bricks, none of that is possible, so.
So to clarify, by retaining, you mean just-
The look.
Rebuild that-
Rebuild the facade.
Fake facade that looks like-
Correct.
Not, not retaining the current facade.
That's correct.
And I'm good, assuming this is the best deal that we can get as a city, and you're, that's your confident opinion?
I really do.
You can't get a better deal.
You know, with Jesse, when we stopped, I think, we don't want to be the cause of holding up building that school. Um, we've had kids in trailers there for how many years?
Yeah, way too many.
So, way too many. And so, this is not about recriminations, um, but I think they know what they're accountable for. And I would be really shocked, and I haven't spoken to anybody on this, but I'd be shocked if they came back and said, no, they couldn't accommodate us there. But i- I, I'm sure, I feel like I have all of your confidences that if they were to say no, that they're going to know that everybody on this council feels that they're making a mistake.
Oh, yeah, no, we'll take legal action if we, if there's an appropriate-
We don't, we don't want to bring up-
I'm just saying.
Yep, we don't need to bring that up. I, I'm hoping it's not necessary.
I hope so, too.
And we've got a pretty good attorney that will be in that meeting to represent us and remind anybody that-
I'm going to bring sock puppets, so you can-
Again?
-complicate the communication. But, so whatever, the, the, the goal of the meeting is obviously for us to present our position on this, to hear back the, the concerns of the school board, and whatever ends up happening, we'll, the next step will come back to, to both boards to take action.
We've already made a major concession. That was when we all agreed that we wanted them to save the, um, the footprint.
Yeah.
And that turns out to be, it doesn't work, because it, the building's not best use. Um, and the other thing was, we thought there'd be an ability to save some of the facade. And on that, and I've spoken to outside sources, engineers and architects all say the same thing, y- you'd be throwing good money after bad. The, the bricks are already deteriorating.
Yeah, well, and, and I think they were open to reusing the bricks to make a little plaza or a walkway with-
Oh, we could do something like that, but I-
I would, I would like that, too, besides just putting a new fake facade.
Oh, I think they'd be thrilled if that's all we were asking, but we're not. We want them to leave us at least this much, so that when you look at this dais, you can say, oh, that's our elementary school. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Let us know how it goes.
Oh, we will.
All right, next up is our pretty good attorney, Derek Rooney.
I'll take it. Um, I was going over with, with Lisa, uh, earlier this, this evening, uh, per my contract with the city, if I can get the fees under the allotted retainer, we have a split arrangement with the city, with, uh, thirty percent goes back to Ray Robinson, and seventy percent goes back to the city. Again, every year since, since I've been here, we have been returned, we have been under budget by nearly a hundred thousand dollars. This year, we sent a check to the city for eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Nice, thank you. We appreciate that.
Well, and, and so I, I, I will bring up at some point in the future how we can, uh, adjust it going forward, but, uh, for, for the time being, this, this arrangement seems to be working pretty well.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay. City manager items.
Thank you, mayor and council. Um, we have placed the discussion regarding the appointments to city liaison boards and committees. We know that we still want to continue a, a higher-level conversation during the strategic planning session on moving- Thank you, mayor and council. Um, we have placed the discussion regarding the appointments to city liaison boards and committees. We know that we still wanna continue, uh, a higher level conversation during the strategic planning session on moving forward with these boards, but if there is any interest from, uh, council at this time to appoint any of these, we're, we're willing to do so or we can defer it as well. Um, I did have the opportunity to speak with, uh, Councilwoman Bogaz, and she did suggest that she might be interested in the tree advisory board. Um, she knows that there was a position that's vacant right now. Um, and that, and then she also continued to maintain her position with the fire district. Um, but that's, uh, solely up to the discretion of council, whether you'd like to discuss that now or defer it.
Well, I mean, we've kicked it down the road a few times already. Do, do we mind, uh, getting this figured out tonight?
I think we should.
Oh, I've got a question.
Yeah.
We've had a couple of boards that, my understanding is, they've either not met in the last year or they meet once or twice. Um, is that best use of time?
That's, that's gonna be part of our.
Right.
I think what we'd like to do is defer that conversation for the strategic planning session.
But it is gonna be part of our strategic.
I like where your head's at, though.
There's been quite a bit of discussion of how we can have more efficiency within the boards. Um, but right now, you do have some boards that don't currently have a liaison, and if, if that's what you'd like to move forward with this evening, we're, and then that would also all be incorporated into any future discussion in more length.
I, I say we just figure it out because we've kinda pushed it back too many times already.
I mean, I would, I don't, I believe last time, the motion was something along the lines of us keep, the people keeping what they had and essentially for filling in with the people who went off. And then if anybody wanted any horse trading, that was pretty much, this was the time that we did it. But I, I believe that's how we did it last time.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know if you procedurally need a motion for that or if that's, I mean, it affects you, so I mean, I don't wanna say like, those are the ones you get, but I mean, I don't know if, from a thought process standpoint, that's what we did last time.
All right, well, let's just go down the, the line. So art in public places, uh, Councilman Fullick, you've been on that?
Um, I mean, I'm just gonna say this. I've been a part of that for 20-some years, Arlene. You weren't even.
Yeah, you're the, we, we know you're the newcomer at it, but, uh.
But, but, does somebody else want that? I mean, I enjoy it and I wouldn't be offended. Not that I don't like it and don't enjoy it, but if somebody wants to be involved, it's very active and it, it does require some time and effort, but.
Going once?
You do a great job too, Nigel. I mean, seriously.
The only thing, at, at some point when you retire and so forth, I'd be more than happy to consider be your alternate if there, if there is a case in that.
There's a great discussion. Maybe some of these, we should have alternates.
Oh, definitely.
We've got, well, I mean, we've got in a couple of our committees and boards.
Okay, so Nigel, we're gonna keep you as the liaison, and if you can't make it, then.
Jim.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick will be the, the second.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, bicycle pedestrian safety committee. Um, I don't think there's really anybody with a whole lot of experience. I, I, I would mind, uh, taking a stab at it if, uh, if anybody else wants it. I'll take it. All right, uh, historic preservation board. Do you have any takers for that one?
Don't look at me.
I mean.
Jim?
Yeah, Jim would, I think Jim would like that one, maybe. That's a good one.
He might make it a little more orderly.
Yeah, I think he would, honestly.
I would ask you to take that, Jim.
I think you should.
Thank you, sir. Can I have another? Sure. I, 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 yes, I'd welcome the opportunity.
Great answer. That's funny.
Special mark on that one. Um, outreach advisory committee, uh.
Yeah, I'm good.
You've been doing that. You wanna?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Uh, special events committee. I think we had, uh.
I'd do that.
Um, and I think was, uh.
Jamie is the alternate.
As, as, as alternate, okay, so. So Laura is permanent and Jamie is the alternate. Uh, streetlight committee. Chris, were you on that one?
Yeah, but it's never met.
I just.
So, so for, for now, we'll, we'll keep you there. Uh, technology advisory board, also, Chris.
Yep, that's fine.
Still enjoying that? All right.
Can we give Jamie the?
Yeah, Jamie was interested in the tree advisory board, so if nobody else, uh, wants it, we'll, Jamie, okay. Uh, veterans advisory committee. Uh, Nigel, I think you had that one.
Yes, I'd be glad to take that again.
And again, a great job.
Everybody's good, okay. Uh, blue zones, uh, I think you had that also, Nigel.
I've never met.
Never met.
So I'll, I'll take it, but that's one I would wanna address.
We'll keep you there, but, uh, we'll put a note on that. Um, all right, uh, board of county commissioners.
Every choir is going to Fort Myers, so that hasn't been done in four years, I don't think.
I've watched it a few times on, on television.
So that's a liaison to the board of county commissioners. Is that attending their?
That's been, that's traditionally been the mayor and the mayor is not traditionally gone, but I feel that you could buck that trend and be a welcome face in the chamber, Mike.
What, what day, what day and time were we talking about?
Tuesday.
Historically, the, the mayor has not attended all of the meetings. It has been more of a liaison, um, interpersonal relationship with the chair of the board of county commissioners, um, having infrequent, you know, frequent meet, discussions, meetings. And then when it's an issue or a topic of concern of the council, there's been attendance in the past.
Okay, so.
That'd be a good one for an alternate.
Oh, yeah, if we want, okay. Well, I, I'll, I'll do that. And if somebody wants to be an alternate to that.
I'll be an alternate.
Everybody's good with that? All right. Um, Benita Estero Economic Development Council.
Yeah, we didn't meet this year. I mean, I'm cool with it, but it, we didn't meet this year.
Another one to plan on, we're talking about.
All right, so, keeping it with you, but we'll revisit that. Okay, uh, BSU.
I'd like to keep it.
All right.
Are you sure? It's so fun.
Um, Chamber of Commerce, Southwest Florida Inc.
We have not really been active.
So.
Well.
Unless anybody else wants it. Jesse, you wanna keep it and we'll.
No, I'm good with it. I mean, our relationship, uh, let's just say we had a strained relationship for a while. Um, I took it over. I think we're good. I'm good with the chair, who's, uh, Tiffany Esposito, who's the state rep now. Uh, I think that relationship is good, but like, as far as us actively being there, I think, I think we could, we could try to rekindle that flame.
So, try to make it better or?
Yeah, yeah, we can try to make it better.
Uh, coastal advisory committee.
Well, that said, hey, but, but we may wanna discuss the fact that they left Benita at some point, which I'm fine with. And listen, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that means anything, but it's worth mentioning.
Yes.
For the record.
Uh, coastal advisory, uh, Chris, that was you.
And they never met when I was, uh.
They haven't met.
Yeah, okay, so, does anybody else want it? And do you wanna stay with it?
I'll stay with it if they ever.
We'll revisit it.
Put that on our revisit list.
But when I was, they didn't meet when I was there, so it's been years.
Okay. All right, uh, Collier County liaison. So.
That's again like the mayor.
Me, and it'll just be.
It's a, as we have issues, like when we have issues.
All right, got it.
Logan Bulver and such.
Um, where are we? Um, true.
True.
Okay, so we don't meet. But I mean, I'm good to be there, but I, I, we have not, uh.
I agree.
Actually met. Like, I've been the chair or I've been, because we get one seat. We haven't met since I've been there.
I, I guess from my end, I have an interest in that since that's sitting in my district, uh, District 6.
I mean, I don't, uh, I don't mind it. You can have it. It's, it's just one of those that they don't meet, so it doesn't, it, this, this was on my list. I have two others that are on my list of inactives that I don't know that we should really be, I don't think we pay to be in it, but I don't know if our name being on it matters because we, it's not an active organization for us.
Well, we'll, we'll go, Jim, and, and, you know, reach out to them and see what's going on and.
Thank you.
See if we need to stay in there. All right, uh, Estero liaison.
That's still me and, uh, it's sort of changed from ECCL. It's been more focused on Burt, so, you know, I just assume, stay on that.
Okay.
I, I think the intent, though, is to switch it, because this was started before the Village Incorporated. It sort of kept the same name. And I know there's a nonprofit liaison, but it's also really, um, because there's so many interacting issues between the Village of Estero and Benita Springs. That's.
Should be with, with the village.
Or the village.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's really the village and talking with McLean and Circozy and seeing what's going on, working with them.
Okay, so Chris is gonna stay with that one. Uh, fire control.
That's Jamie.
Jamie.
Jamie. Uh, Florida League of Cities.
I think we're good with that. She's, she does good on it. If she still wants it, and I've been going, she's been there, she does a good job. I assume she would.
I, I think we had multiple on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. Um, so Jamie is alternate one. Um, Jesse, you're the first, and then there's an alternate two with, um, Councilmember Fullick.
And we also need to replace somebody to be the region, who Fred was the one who did the local.
Yeah, that's, that's further down.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
All right, so Jesse, you're the.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
We got two alternates, got it. All right, Fort Myers Beach liaison, uh, looks like.
They haven't met, but I'll, I'll see if I can reach out with them and, because I see them at, um, MPO, so.
Okay. Horizon council, I think that was also you.
I'd like to keep that.
Uh, regularly meets still? Is that something that?
Yep.
It meets twice a month.
Okay.
They have a lunch coming up, I think.
All right.
They do tomorrow. Everybody's RSVP'd, right?
Uh, human services.
Money when we don't show up.
Say it again?
The human services advisory council. It was, uh.
Me, another one that should be on our checklist.
All right, so, keeping that one, but looking into it. All right, uh, LCSO.
Jamie will keep it?
No, I'll keep it.
Jesse, do you mind?
I thought you said, you said Jamie.
Yeah, yeah.
Jesse, would you mind if, uh, I was an alternate?
No, please.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
All right, so we got alt. So the MPO.
Well.
Uh, we have.
Oh, okay, so.
Normally, two, two members and an alternate. Uh, Fred, Fred went off, I think.
That should be on the list. I'm not even on it, but I wouldn't wanna be on it. I wouldn't wish it on any of you.
All right, so.
The MPO?
Yeah.
All right, so, like, historically, like, the, the mayor's usually on it, so I wouldn't mind taking one of the, the two main ones.
Yes.
And then Laura was the other main, and Chris, you were the alternate?
Yep.
Would we be good with that, or?
Yep.
Yeah, all right, uh, Southwest Florida League of Cities.
Well, there's also, though, the Metropolitan Executive Board, which isn't on this list. So I'll attend that and you're gonna be the alternate? Or would you like to attend that and I'll be the alternate? It meets in Cape Coral.
Yeah, yeah.
Wednesday afternoon at 1:30.
Once a month?
So let, uh, real quick on the, I, the city should have, be able to have, if we would like, we can get two alternates for the MPO.
For the executive?
No, for the, the main.
For the regular?
The main, because they're.
Two voting members.
Okay.
Two alternates.
Okay, um, but when is the executive, uh, it's once a month on a Wednesday, you said?
It's once a month on a Wednesday at 1:30. Um, it would've been this Wednesday.
Right, and there should always have been an executive, uh, an alternate. So I'll do the executive and, does somebody wanna be the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Is that right, Mike?
Uh, yeah.
You got enough if you're going on the executive.
So we got.
I just wanna clarify. You said there's two alternates, though, for the main.
Well, there's two voting members, right?
Two voting members. Not on, not on the executive.
I know, we're talking about the regular.
Yeah, but Mike and I are on the regular.
No, I.
But we need two alternates.
We need two alternates. Right now, we have one alternate, which is Councilmember.
So we have an opportunity to add one more alternate is my, is my point. The current, the current MPO.
Why not?
Okay. All right, Jim, you're, you're voluntold.
Voluntold. Problem.
Thanks for stepping forward.
So, so would, everyone's gonna go, or if I'm not able to go, I ring?
We have two alternates, so.
So I ring someone then, at least?
Just, just communicate with Jane and then we'll go to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because we can't talk to each other, so.
Somebody should have at least two or three days notice.
Yeah, but, but let Jane know and then Jane will get with the alternates and figure out who.
You know, if situation changes, you can always let people know.
Okay, all right, so back to, uh, Southwest Florida League of Cities.
That's the local one, so.
I'll do it.
Anybody else? Laura? Got a lot of stuff, Laura. Um, you were previously the alternate, so, uh, who, who wants to be the alternate on that one?
I'll jump then.
Oh, Jim, Jim. Oh, no, no, volunteer, please.
No, please, Jim.
Jim, you, I mean, you only have two, yeah, all right, Jim. All right, Jim, you're, you're the alternate?
Yep.
Nice, Jim.
Uh, TDC, Nigel, you're on that one now, is?
Yeah, I'm a voting member and.
Okay, yeah, if you're a voting member, we don't wanna change this, so.
I would suggest.
We only get that for two years every so often, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and it, it really is, it's, you learn a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll, I'm not gonna do it tonight, but a report when we're doing our planning because things are changing.
We're the better.
Next question?
When does it meet, Nigel?
Um, it is the, uh, third Thursday morning. We meet at 9:00 AM up at Fort Myers.
Yeah, so West Coast Inland Navigation District. Looks like it was.
I don't think they ever.
I believe it's a pretend organization.
Yeah, because I, four years now, never.
So Laura, and we'll look at that one.
They, they meet, they meet quarterly.
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 Well, they make.
Generally meet in Venice, but they rotate.
Correct, but they do make, it would be.
With gondolas?
It would be, it would be, it would be good to keep it on list because we do apply for grant funding from them, so that we keep, so we make sure that we're, if there is an opportunity to show, they do let us know, but they, after COVID, they switched a lot of their meetings to virtual.
Laura, you wanna keep that one, or does anybody else have interest in it?
Somebody else wants it?
And, and we can also circle back around with Jamie in case.
Why don't I circle with Jamie with that one? It's only quarterly and, um, it does have some bearings with, um, we've had applications before with the fire district, with the boats and the sheriff's office with boats and patrols, so.
But a question.
And I could be an alternate for her.
And dredging, yeah, so we can.
Okay, uh, Wonder Gardens liaison.
I'll keep it.
Yeah, okay. Uh, YMCA.
I don't know the word.
Jim, that's in your district of view.
Well, it's technically on Jesse's side of the.
Oh, yeah, actually. Yeah, yeah, I forgot with the, the whole redistricting thing.
Uh, you know, I think you'll, you'll enjoy it quite a bit, Jim, and I don't wanna deny you the opportunity.
Well, thank you, sir.
I mean, I, I'll be the alternate and you can ring.
Okay.
All right, so it looks like we made it through the whole list.
Uh, one we didn't mention, uh, regional planning council. I'm the person for that, and that needs to be on the list of ones to talk about because.
So I think it's not on this list because you previously voted to remove it.
Oh, good. Okay, so I was gonna complain about it and apparently I did a good enough job last time, so disregard.
Probably made the motion.
And I was like, let's make sure we get rid of this. Okay.
The past two years, we have not funded it.
Good, good. Fecless organization.
Hey, well, Phil, if you, we got that done.
Yes.
All right, uh.
Thank you. Um, I just, a reminder, the waiver of the permit fees has stopped at the end of January. Um, we have noticed that other neighboring jurisdictions have begun to pull back on the emergency resolutions, and we will probably as well do the same and probably have an agenda item to discuss, um, to, since, uh, number one is, one of them was the waiver of fees. There was some executive orders. I think we're at the point in time where we can start to rescind some of those emergency orders. Uh, the grant applications we have, we continue to move forward with, and, um, we don't feel it's necessary to continue, um, the actual, um, emergency order to do so. Um, also, I just wanted to discuss with you all an opportunity on February 19th. Uh, that meeting starts at 9:00 AM, city council. We'd like to ask if we could follow up with a workshop immediately following the meeting to start the CIP discussions. Um, specifically, we'd like to start with stormwater and transportation. Um, what we've been looking at is preparing the budget cycle session and adoption through, um, for the 2025, 2026 budget. Um, we are looking at pushing back to provide you a little bit earlier, the draft budget in June. Um, and we're looking possibly for the opportunity to, um, have you prepare a vote on the, um, tentative millage in July. That is the, that is the notice that goes out in the trim notice as well. Um, so we, we're trying to, wanna continue our budget discussions as quickly as we can. Um, and then also, we'd hope to reschedule the strategic planning session that was previously planned for Mar- on March 5th, and we're hoping to start at 12:00 PM. I mean, yeah, yes, 12:00 PM, and we would just continue, that's a day, that's an evening meeting, and we would continue until either we would break sooner or have the, have our council meeting at 5:30.
Till someone breaks down or until we have a break?
We close.
All right, just clarifying, just clarifying. All right, just clarifying, just clarifying.
Break, um, and we will have a facilitator for that as well.
Will they have sock puppets?
I'll have, I'll keep that's up to.
You're starting to scare me now, Jim.
Derek, get on that.
Yeah, we possibly will, if we have the opportunity, we'll include on February nineteenth, facilities discussion. I do know you will have a presentation from the Wonder Gardens at that meeting to talk about their future plans of coming off of um, their most recent fundraiser, so we want to have a full discussion about all facilities as well.
Um, I just had a question, um, wanted to see with the discussion, uh, on the CIP for the bioreactor, if, if we can have staff look at adding lighting to the lot for the parking, just to make it more safe at night, now that we have more things going on downtown. People will be using that and it gets pretty dark over there at night, so if you can just come back with a plan for doing some lighting.
I think, I think we have direction to come back with a proposal which would, could be voted on in the future.
Matt, off the top of your head, how many parking spots do we have at Bioreactor One site?
I think it's a hundred and one. Uh, that includes the, the, um, if it's not a hundred and one, it's just shy of a hundred, but it's just right there, and that includes, I believe it's two handicap spots.
Laura, did you have a question? Was that a previous button?
No, previous button, thank you though.
Anything else?
That concludes, thank you.
All right, Mayor and Councilmember reports, who wants to start off? Jim?
I'll provide copies of this for afterwards, but right now, we had talked two or three meetings ago about my discussion with our County Commissioner Dave Maluka, uh, about hosting a town hall, we have firmed up a date, time and location. That would be on Thursday, March the twenty seventh. And I'll get you a copy of this, Mike, so you can, don't have to race through writing this. It will be open to all residents of Benita Springs. Uh, it will be held at the Fire and Rescue District, uh, with a seating capacity of approximately two hundred. The agenda basically will run from four till five thirty. We'll have introductions, uh, and then have both our County Commissioner and County Manager Harner take the first thirty to thirty-five, forty minutes to just kind of give an overview of key issues, um, in Lee County and hopefully a chunk that are addressing us. Uh, and then the second half would be an open of Q and A, uh, from the community for another thirty to forty-five minutes. Commissioner Maluka has requested suggested topics for the, for both his comments and also Mr. Harner's. Uh, so if you have any suggestions, I had spoken to Arlene about this and, um, she would more than happy to be the concentration point for forwarding those, so they can craft that into their opening comments. Lastly, I want to formally request the support of our City Manager and staff to publicize, promote, and assist with the conference room setup, takedown, and staff support to go ahead and register attendees to the event.
What date was it again, Jim?
Thursday, March twenty seventh, four to five thirty at, uh, Fire and Rescue District Headquarters at Benita Grand.
And Jim, I have one question.
Yes.
I love the fact that they, he wanted us to come up with some questions, I'm wondering kind of backwards. I wonder if potentially maybe we give him a topic or two not to discuss, and the specific topic I'm talking about is, they've been going back, the county's been going back and forth with, uh, our state legislature regarding single member districts, and we have budget requests coming to both the county and the state, so by making that not one of the focal points, it's like we're not choosing sides, and then we're not making anybody that we're gonna be asking for money for later mad. So we're like, hey, we'd like to do this town hall, but this is not a single member districts town hall, because the ones that they've had before, it fills up the room and that's all they're talking about, and then we're making enemies on both sides where we want to be friends.
This, this is designed to hopefully provide a line of communication between council, staff, and the residents of the City of Benita Springs about how our role is and how we interact with Lee County, and provide a forum for each of our respective districts where we're impacted by the county to hopefully encourage an open dialogue that our needs and priorities are put up. There is no political agenda regarding districts or any of that stuff, this is designed to, to open and create, um, lines of communication and between both the citizens, us and staff.
Right, and that's good and noble from your side, and I believe that from your side, but from the commission's side, these things always turn political and these things are always, you know, they will use the venue to turn it into a, and it's just an easy thing to be like, hey, can we just not talk about single member districts? And if we do that, it will be, it'll keep it, it'll just keep us safer, I think.
I'm fine, I guess my comment, for those comments, that directional stuff, uh, if you can just go ahead and forward that to, to Arlene, because I don't think there's any boundaries to what you're suggesting, Jesse, I think that that's a, a great comment, let's keep it to.
Whatever.
The benefit of, of Benita Springs and its residents.
Yep, perfect.
Good opportunity for David Malika.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Jim, Nigel, anything?
Yes, sir, real quick, um, the statistics, et cetera, it's, it's not grim, but, uh, from TDC meetings, I will tell you, one of the big takeaways, people are getting more aggressive and looking for ways to enhance tourist dollars, and it's interesting how everybody, every city has adopted something, Cape Coral's building world-class pickleball, which, so, we don't need to do anything like that here, um, you know, baseball in some cities, softball. But at the end of the day, um, I hope in our planning meetings, we start looking at some of the things that we can put on the table for the future that we can do specifically that will not only enhance the downtown, but our year-round residents, so, again, thinking outside the box, I look at what the, the, um, Little League Baseball fields, what that's done, not only for the community, but it's creating revenues and it's thriving business downtown into our hotels, so, something to discuss. Um, I gotta tell you guys, I went down Thursday for the ribbon cup and cutting, and I know Jesse, you were there, Laura, you were there, Mike, Jim, we missed you, but at the end of the day, um, having been here for twenty plus years, that whole day I was in a good mood, I went back down Thursday evening, I saw people walking up and down Old Forty-One, some couples hand in hand. I mean, it, it was, and I look at certain people that are no, either not involved in the city or even gone, but who saw this twenty years ago, we have a real downtown, guys, in Sugar Shack, they couldn't have been, they had a soft opening all week. What they did for the first responders was amazing, there was three, three hundred and fifty people, uh, Mike and I actually had a beer. But you, you just feel like, um, it's, that we're there, we, we've hit that tipping point. Uh, you know what, there's a guy in the audience right now, I give him a hard time, and I probably will continue to, but I gotta say Kyle Moran, your passion, the way you've held people, the feet to the fire, sometimes it's appreciated.
Always appreciated.
Great job.
Thank you, Nigel, Chris?
Uh, yeah, and the Wonder Gardens is having a, uh, a major fundraising event, uh, on February thirteenth. I would hope that, uh, you know, a few of us, um, can be there. I'm gonna speak at, uh, the event to, uh, try to make people understand what a private part, private-public partnership's all about, uh, how the Wonder Garden benefits, there's some money laying on the sidelines that, from donors that are wanting to make sure this public-private partnership works. Uh, so any of you that can be there and help work the crowd on that in terms of what's going on at the Wonder Gardens, what we're trying to accomplish, uh, sort of give me a little support in terms of the comments and make, you know, I think it would be a good opportunity to start triggering some of those donations that are sitting on the sidelines still, so. Just encourage you to think about being there February thirteenth and it starts, I forget exactly the time, it starts about six.
I was gonna say five or six.
Yeah, so if you can be there, let me know and I'll, uh, make arrangements, get you, uh, you know, if you haven't got a ticket, then let me know and I'll make sure you get in.
Chris, Laura?
Um, I met with, um, CEO of BSU, Andy Kobel, and I asked him to come on the twenty-fifth to, uh, the, uh, water, to the fire station, and he will be there and, or representatives will be there.
Jesse?
Uh, yeah, no, just shout out to Blake again, one last time, Sugar Shack, definitely shout out Sugar Shack, and, uh, today's my old man's birthday too, so, uh, one of, my old man's birthday is today, so. You know, he adopted me a long, long time ago, and my life wouldn't be what it is if it wasn't for him, so I'd like to wish him a happy birthday from the greatest city in America.
Thank you. Yeah, I also want to say, uh, Sugar Shack, uh, amazing venue, uh, great soft openings and, and grand opening, ribbon cutting and all that. Definitely a good public response. Um, we also had the Ukulele Fest in the park on Sunday, it had a very good turnout for that. And the, um, Historical Society had their pop-up beer garden on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, which also brought out a lot of people in the evenings.
That's where you were.
Yep. If there's beer involved, you know. But no, I, I, everything seems to be on track and going well, so, you know, thank you, everybody. Staff's doing a great job. Public comment.
Rich Foreman, I just want to say that the City of Benita Springs, the residents really owe you a debt of gratitude. It's impressive the way that you work collegially, cooperative, to advance the, the benefits of the city, they have a lot to be grateful for, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So moved.
Well done.